Carlos will kick my ass.
That is not true, I'm present here, sir.
There you are. Hey, I was thinking of you, buddy.
I appreciate it.
How you feeling Sid? You look good.
Uh, energy drinks.
You, I mean, you sound a little bit nasally, but other than that, you know.
I'm still running, I'm still running a fever though.
Dang.
Dang, alright, so, are we all ready? So, this is, this is how I'm gonna do this, uh, and but this is a group party, I'm gonna show you what I have, and then afterwards, people can share what they have, or discuss it. As I was saying, telling Neil, I don't think I have all the right answers, but I think I'm pretty damn close.
Sounds good.
Alright.
Yeah, nope.
So, people, I spent a lot of time on this, I blew off work, because I had covid. So, what you see here, it was painstakingly slow. So, the answers may be right, but the visual part of it is awesome, so. I'm proud of that. Alright, so the first part here is, you're given this little table here, and they're basically asking you to put together a demand and supply, uh, chart. And it's not as easy as you think it is in Excel, but anyhow, here's that sucker.
Wow.
So, this is what it looks like when you, when you, we can get it in there. So, table two, and then table one. So, the question is, consider the market for a car chair, um, basically, you know, blah, 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 assume it's perfect, so here's table two, because that's what it is right there, that's your, um, sweet spot. Q2 and Q, right? But if there was, if it's monopolistic, they're gonna go for this price here at 950, I think the question is, um, A, at price 950, is the market equilibrium at 950? Well, we can see from the original, you know, if we put this together, 850 is, you know, the equilibrium. So, I say, go see table one. If not, calculate any shortages or surplus if it's market, it'll solve for equilibrium. So, I'm showing here, hopefully everyone could see that.
Yeah.
That, uh, this is what we said, Q2 is, you know, where it should be, they're charging 950. So, all this stuff in between here and here is the dead weight, right? We already seen that, and everything else above this price ceiling here is, uh, the consumer surplus, and below it is producer surplus. Alright, alright. Table two shows equilibrium that QS equals QD, or P2, quantity at 200 prices at, so you can see here, this is, you know, solving for it, it's pretty darn easy. Using the model of supply and demand, illustrate how the market would change if new rideshare technology allows almost any car owner to offer such rides. So, I'm assuming from this question is that right now Lyft has, you have to go into Lyft or Uber, but if I had an app that I can become an independent contractor on my own, I guess that's what he's assuming here, so that means that there'd be a flood of supply in the market, yeah?
Yeah.
As soon, but, on the other hand, students become painfully aware that they're killing the environment, so they decided to take public transportation. So, that means the demand would kind of shrink.
So, this is where I thought uh, taking, taking over is technically taking the public transport. Because
No, 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 that's, no, that's, that what they mean by that, they mean getting on buses and trains, they're not talking about Ubers.
Ah, okay. That makes sense now, so I, I thought of it as demand increasing, because now people don't want to drive for themselves, instead taking alternatives, and
That's correct.
I saw, I saw rideshare as an alternative for driving, so.
But, but they, but, but if, if that was the case, then they would say students are doing the ride sharing, but they're not, they're saying public traffic, and
Makes sense, yeah.
The clue is public. Where Uber and them are private.
Okay.
That's your clue.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Mm-hmm. So, this I stole off the internet, this graph. So, yeah, so, supply floods the market, but demand shrinks, and so the price changes and whatever.
Yeah, makes sense.
If you're talking about blah, 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 technology would be a determinant of supply, in this example, increased supply, the market is downward shift, S1 to S2. In the second part of the problem, students changing their taste and purpose, remember, that's a determinant also. Environmentally conscious will cause the market demand to decrease, this shift downward to the left. Determined demand in the example are taste and preference and change consumers of the market. Any questions there on that one?
Hey, table two again. It's Sid.
Yes?
For part A, do we just show on the graph, or is there something, like, we have to calculate and get a value on it?
Well, I went to a lot of CHIG answers, and I didn't see anyone trying to figure it out.
Yeah, even me neither, like, I was kind of struggling, like, where to calculate this surplus, and uh, so, that's why, like, if anyone else has any other
I mean, I can share mine, I got something real easier than that, it makes me feel like I did it wrong, so.
You're welcome, buddy.
And I just highlighted, well, go ahead.
Well, I got the same graph as you did for this.
I didn't put the graph, but I, I put the wording, so.
We're there, buddy.
So, mine, I didn't even do any of that graph, I just said, with equilibrium, demand and supply has to be equal. And from the graph, you'll see 200 equals 200, which means 850.
Neil, I took the same
Well done, Neil.
Say again?
I took the same approach.
Yeah, and so, when I saw Sid, I started to get nervous, had cold hands, because
I did, I get nervous too, because that's what I did too.
No, but, but again, I, I took the time to do it, you know, like, you know, overachiever, Neil is correct, we arrived at the destination.
So, I mean, yeah, the easy way, I think, does that, and if you guys want to make an explanation why you got to this, just say, okay, definition of equilibrium, uh, quantity, demand quantity, uh, quantity demanded should be equal quantity supplied, and then from the graph, that means the price would be 850. Um, that's about it for that one.
I am, Carlos. So, the surplus is 115, right?
Oh yeah, that's right, so, is it right there?
I got that as well, yeah.
Yeah, so, no, at the price 950, the market is not in equilibrium, at 950, uh, QS minus QD, that's 260, it's basically, uh, there, 260 minus 145, then you have a surplus of 115.
Hmm, is the surplus the area, or is it just the quantity? I think that
Surplus is just, is the extra, you know, stuff.
Like what's left over, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's the stuff that they couldn't sell, I guess, because demand is only 145, right? So.
This is, this is essentially a surprise, possibly, a surprise.
Alright, you solve for surplus, excellent.
Right, and then, I already said that, this is wrong, so, it's good, I like your explanation, Sid.
Alright, let me share, let me share mine, then, for, and then we go, go back to you, for the simplistic answer. Alright.
So, so for table three, Sid, so, uh, let's, can we go over this graph a little bit?
Alright, certainly. So, do you agree that the technology will add more drivers to the road?
Think so, yes?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
No, other way around, right? Technology will reduce the driver.
No, 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 the technology will increase the supply, read the
Yeah, it will increase the supply, because it says now, almost any car owner can offer rides.
Right, so every car can do that, so it will definitely increase the, but however, taking the right, like, transportation will
Well, hang on, hang on, hang on, there's, there's two problems, go with the first one, the first one is supply, let's establish that
Yeah, so it is an increase in the supply.
Right, we know that technologies are determinant in the shift in supply. So, we agree, so if there is a, if there is a increase, does it shift left or right?
Right, right.
Alright, so we got that one, so, according to the thing, S1, S2 is correct, now let's move on to the second part, which is what happens to demand if students become environmentally conscious?
The amount shifts to the left, it reduces.
Yeah.
There you go, the smart man, Olu.
Right.
Martin, Martine.
So, uh, prove me wrong on this then.
What?
No, Olu, prove me wrong.
Yeah, no, no, this is perfectly correct, I
No, he said, he agreed with you.
Oh, okay. How's that, get up and fight the guy, geez.
I got the same graph as you, Sid, so I feel great.
Alright, again, I stole that off the internet, alright, so, uh, I think that's everything for, uh, question one, right? One, A, B, C?
You just have to basically say what the determinants are, but
Exactly.
Yeah.
Alright.
Calling it out, the determinant that affected the supply, I just put the increase in the number of producers due to the new technology, allowing any car owners to offer such rides, and then for demand, I basically said, the determinant that affected demand is the consumer's expectation and mindset of becoming environmentally conscientious, and to try to take public transportation more often.
I would say, put in taste and preference, because that's on his slides.
Yeah, I'm gonna put, like, one out of those six things, which he has
Exactly.
Well, that's one of them, becoming environmentally conscientious, I got it from the slides.
Then you're gonna go, you're solid.
Verbatim, becoming more environmentally conscientious.
Alright, bud, alright, number two, this whole
I don't know how I read the question, but I read the question completely wrong, so I was, I must be drinking, so, okay.
Benny, if you like to talk, if I say on afterwards, we can talk about alcoholism, but that's
And you're getting a flask?
Oh, yeah, we're getting flask?
You already have your monogram one, what do you want, another one? Believe it or not, I had a monogram flask as a high school graduation present.
Damn.
My name is Sid, and I'm an alcoholic, alright. So, the question is here, suppose your firm has capital investment in two projects, right? Uh, one project costs 10, $100,000 down payment, generates 50,000, the other one is, for four years, the other one is costs you 150 upfront, but it generates 75,000 profits, but it's only three years, and we assume that the rate is 8%. What is the net present, was NPV?
Oh, I got the different answer than you.
I got the same one, exact same figures.
Figures, hopefully that means we're right, or all wrong.
So.
I'm gonna share a different screen here. So, you can see, bum, 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 uh, what's going on?
Hmm, okay.
Alright, can you see Excel?
Yep.
Yes.
Alright, so the formula, so everyone knows what the formula is, I hope, at this point. So, you put the, the negative in year zero. Alright, here, this is, this is the formula, let's see if you guys can see that. Alright, so the formula is one over one plus the rate. And then, and then it's, uh, square the number of years, do we all agree on that?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, so that's all that is there, and then what this is, is I'm taking present value, dividing it by the future value, you know, which is that formula, so that's how we get the $46,000. And then, again, this one here, squaring number two. This one here, you're squaring number three, so that, that's, that's a logical, and so, when you sum these all together, that's, that's what you get. And, and do the exact same thing here, a negative number of the first one, and then we're going, we're just do the same formula, does anyone else have a different method they're using for this?
Yes, I do. Um, but I, all I did was went to this website and used the calculator.
Did you get the same answers?
I did, yes.
Well, you should, me too, I, I did it this way to prove my work, but then I went to the calculator online, and like, okay. Um, so, I'm gonna go back to the other screen then.
And, and that question, it didn't say whether to, uh, show your work, so.
It did not, again, overachiever page.
But I do have explained right, so it can interpret.
Alright, here, if your firm can pursue, if I explain, right, so then here, if NPV is the only criteria, because remember, there could be other things, but he didn't say, in decide which product, pursue, we choose the highest NPV that will bring to the firm. In this case, project will bring 65,000, the other one will bring 43.
Um, actually, the second one, I've got something else, I got 98,000.
Uh, I got same 43,200.
Wait a minute, does it say? Uh, because project two should be done at the same, oh, three years.
Three years, not four, I made the same mistake.
Yeah, that was for, that was for four years, this was for three years.
There you go, yeah, that's, that's pretty tricky, because he spelled out three, instead of putting a number three. God damn it, Ray, oh, sorry, it's not Ray, I'm still thinking about Ray.
We all are, I hate that man.
Yeah, okay.
But, but I, but I will confess that this morning, when the, uh, the attorney general for New York State was putting the, uh, talking about Trump and all his, you know, bad deeds, she was bringing up things that we talked about in Ray's class, and talking about, uh,
Interest.
The accounting, you know, uh, firms that, you know, their practices, is it the GAAP? General Accounting Principles, and so I was like, oh, we talked about, anyhow, moving on.
We don't need 604 anymore, so, let's, let's move on.
Moving on, 604. In number C, or letter C, excuse me, suppose a project two results in a patentable innovation, potentially send the flow of the profit, uh, so basically, for next 20 years in, and get 20, $75,000, um. We should also probably mention that it may be monopolistic, in the sense that it's an invention, and they may be a price maker, but I don't think that makes any difference in this.
Yeah, doesn't.
Uh, with patent protection, the firm would earn 75,000 at the end of each year, so, um, basically, um, yeah, that's what I got, I mean, you can zoom in. We good with that?
Yeah, this, this is what I got too, yeah.
Alright.
So, in B, in, in 2B, I use the profitability, profitability index to, to do it, instead of the, just the net present value, I think it just you do the same thing.
Okay, did you use it like the table?
Uh, no, so just the, uh, the, in, in one of the slide, profitability index calculation, so it's like the net present value divided by uh, the upfront investment, I, I think that's what it is. And then, it's, it's essentially just giving you the same answer, project one is the one to go, right, so.
Uh, and, and I think Neil rightly pointed out here, it doesn't really say, show your work.
Yeah.
So, that may be all our saving grace, that one, that's showing the, alright, we ready to move on to three?
Uh, wait, uh, so for B, so what did you say? Because I think I, I might have like a unique answer for B, this, you know, if your firm can only pursue one, one of the projects, what should it pursue, and why?
Please share.
Uh, well, so, basically, I said I would not pursue either one of them, because they're both crap.
But, but that's not true, it, it says in all our literature, that if it's, if NPV is greater than zero, you should pursue it.
Oh, is that what it says? Okay, then, but, but also, I said, because they're both, you know, under or, or whatever you started with, I would, I would pursue project one, or, you know, project one, simply because it's, you know, NPV is higher.
The last one is like 586,000.
Well, um, B is still talking about project one and two without part C, Gopal.
Oh, oh, yeah, B.
Right. Yeah, obviously, yeah, I'll pick C, but that's not part of the, uh, the choices.
Yeah.
But yeah, so, so basically, given the, given the two, which, you know, thank you for that, Sid, but given the two values, I said I would not pursue any of them, but if I, if someone were to twist my arm, I would pursue the first one.
Just remember, anytime NPV is greater than zero, you pursue the project.
I have, I have to
And if there's two of them, the one with the greatest NPV, that, that's to be the takeaway here, kids.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Anytime.
This one here, this one was sketchy for all of us.
Yes.
So, I, I did the best I could based on my limited calculus, but I'm sure Benny has a, a better solution, right? Because you took a lot of calculus.
Me? No.
Oh, boy.
I, I took some, but
Okay.
But, I, I don't think, I, do, do we need calculus for this one?
Yes.
We don't, I think, uh
You, you do, in the sense that it's, it's simple calculus, in the sense that, if you have anything that has, uh, like a number, a 1,000 plus something Q plus, um, Q and a, uh,
Square.
Exponent, that's, that's your signal that that's a calculus thing, where you drop the two in front, multiply, drop the number, and then drop whatever's in front of Q, that, that's, that's simple calculus, right there.
Yeah, it's, it's just taking the basic derivative, but
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
In mine, I didn't even do that, I just, I, I ended up with the same answer, but, you know.
Exactly, so anyhow, this is the long way, boys and girls, you don't have to do it this way. Uh, but anyhow, I did, I did it that way, because that, I took his class before, and this is what he wanted from us, so, know that.
Damn it, okay, then, don't move it, I'm gonna take a picture.
Or you can get the recording.
Oh, that's right. Wait, so you, you had this, uh, professor before?
Yeah, that's why he and I are so chummy, because we, we, I did like a whole course with him. It was this, it was this and some other strategy, you know, combined with this course. Alright. So, is this a long run or short run? So, when Q equals 1,000, right here, this right here?
Mm-hmm.
That $1,000 is your fixed cost.
Yeah.
So, I stayed here, the difference between short run is fixed cost, over time, fixed inputs become variables, here we see the Cox function to 1,000 minus 2B, the fixed cost is 1,000, so this indicates a short run.
So, I think, uh, 500, because the cost function is C of Q.
Yeah, that was my question too, because I think we need to look at cost function instead of
Yeah.
curve.
Instead of the demand curve, you see that?
Yeah.
So, you think it's 500?
Yeah, because that's your cost function, not, so you get it from the cost function, not the demand curve.
I shall make the changes right now.
I'm good. And I, I just basically said, it's a short run, because the wire intercept of 500 means that, that's the base cost, even before you start making any quantity, just quantity zero.
So, the fixed cost is 500 to get, right?
Mm-hmm.
500 plus one half Q squared, right? Is that what we said?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, learned something today. Cool. Thank you, Neil.
As it.
Alright. So, if the firm is currently charging 325, so I, I put in here, MC goes Q, because this whole stupid thing here, the cost, right, equals one, which is just Q. And then when you do, the marginal revenue becomes 5Q, and then the price is 500 uh, minus Q over two. And that's a lot of the answers I got off CHIG, you know, I went through a bunch of them, and that seems to be what they all had. And if you have something different, please. So, here, so here, the difference between the short, oh, the firm is currently charging 325, are they making profit? So, we know that the formula is marginal revenue equals marginal cost, since marginal is 5Q and MC is Q, QM is 250, if the price is 350, then we kind of insert it, then we get Q is 350. And then, if the profit is total revenue minus total cost, then you put it in, and you get a profit of $52,000, this is the, me stealing this off the internet, uh, algebra, not al, yeah, algebra page.
So, so that's the calculus way of doing it.
Yeah, if someone has a different way, and they want to share a screen. Let me show mine real quick, because, uh, where's mine? Here. You guys see it?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yeah, so basically, all I did was, same as Sid, because it's a monopoly, monopolistic, you know, situation here, so MC equals MR, so Q, solve for Q here. And you end up with 250, and then from there, uh,
That's Yeah, we got, we got the same, yeah, we got the
Yeah, we got the same, but like, I think what Sid's show is exactly, basically this right here, right?
Yeah, exactly, that's exactly
I don't know, I don't know if this looks a lot similar than Sid's, but basically, because it's handwritten, but you know, you solve that, and you get, you end up with 52 grand.
Can I say that again, Neil? Good job, Neil, that's, that's it exactly. Neil, can I see that again?
Yeah, did you want me to highlight it, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, right there.
Oh, sorry. This is just a plug and play formula.
Yeah.
Once you solve for Q.
Yeah, this, this is algebra, makes sense.
Yes, indeed.
And then for C, basically, they said, what if, or should the firm, uh, change the price they are charging, what price should they charge it, show your work, and this is what I did. Again, go MC, MR, get 250, and then, basically.
That's what I got.
Yeah.
So, so nobody use, uh, the Excel that we learned during summer, to use solver, or anything to do this?
It's way beyond my skill set.
Olu might have used it.
I know, I'm a little nervous, you could, you could be using that, but you know what, I thought about that, Benny, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna get it wrong, so, I didn't really do great, that one.
Yeah.
And then for D, basically just said, given for your B and C above, by how much? How much would the firm's profits increase, and basically, it's just uh, 62,000 minus 52,000, increased profit of 10,000. And Bob's young.
And Bob's your uncle.
Hey, uh, Neil, can you pull your screen quick?
Oh, sorry. I pulled that pretty quickly there, sorry.
So, in your, in your, uh, first equation, where you have written profit equals to revenue minus cost, you have used 350. And that 350 is
Yes, you'll tell us how you got 350.
No, no. No, no, yeah, I know, like that three fifty is from three twenty-five.
Right, this one.
Okay, and then the down you use to the three seventy. So here, okay.
So, yeah, maybe I should move this right here down to part C, to be honest. Because it almost seems like I didn't even use it, you know what I mean?
Yeah, but yeah, you, yeah, it's.
Yeah.
Hey, hey, Neil, uh, I have a basic question. Sorry, I mean catching up with economics here. So, yeah, so um there was this in this question, they are saying that MC. Marginal cost of Q equal to Q, right?
Yes.
So I I know that you you mentioned that this is a short run. I'm sorry, I joined the meeting late, maybe you guys already discussed, but. You're saying there is a five hundred even before quantity is produced.
Correct.
But the cost, if it says marginal cost of quantity equal to Q, which means that whatever quantity you produce, that's a marginal cost, isn't it? Or am I reading that wrong? So I was thinking this is the long run.
No, because I I think the way I I interpret this is. This the question, the question of short run and long run, I treated that independently of the. Of what you're just talking about, which is, you know, if in a monopolistic. Uh, situation like this one, MC equals MR. So. I I see and and what makes it hard too is because. His equation is starting to look the same. And some of them, you know, it's just equal to Q. And then when you plug it in, it's just Q, you know what I mean? And then there's five hundred Q here, and then all of a sudden, there's. You know, one thousand minus two P, which is very similar, I don't know, but. Does that make sense? I I think if you just. If you think of it separately in in two different uh questions.
Yeah.
And like before you get to B, just think of it like, okay, the question is, is this a short run or a long run? And I just automatically looked at the cost function and I saw that there's a Y intercept, yeah.
That's what I saw first, and then I saw got confused when it came to MCQ equal to Q, then I said, hey, now what does that mean, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So the MCQ, it's normally the the der- derivative, right? So like that, that's the calculus part of it.
Right.
So so that's like the slope or something. Yeah, but it just make it a bit confusing when when it's just equal to Q. It looks too simple, simple.
Yeah, I kind of almost wish like the equation is a little bit more. There's there's more substance to it so that you can we can distinguish it from others. But if it is equal to Q and that's it, sometimes, you know, because I got confused too. I was telling Sid this on the side that. I I was unsure with three because I keep confusing the MCQ equals Q with something else. You know, like, so here, MCQ equals Q. What I was doing is I'm making this equal to. Q here, see that?
That screws it all up.
Yeah, and and I'm just, I'm screwed all the time, so. You know.
Yeah.
And maybe he did that on purpose, you know, to trick us.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, here's the final exam. All right, we move on to question number four.
Yep.
Oh, my shit, oh.
Who wants to share other than Neil or me?
I can share mine because I I want people to tell me if it's wrong or right. Here, where's mine?
Good idea.
A fellow fellow sliding essay for number four, so.
Yeah, so so I'll just read my answer. So for A, it says each types of employee types. Of employee types face some incentive issues, explain what is wrong with incentive design. For each of the three types. So what I did was, you know, the flat wage production employee. Has no incentive to work to work hard because there is no benefit. Uh, they get paid regardless. And then the cold call sales staff, it's even worse. They get paid base pay and no additional benefit for making a sale. And then the manager, uh, manager has a base pay plus commission, but the manager has too many unrelated tasks. And commission is not based directly on task.
You're nice. I I was mean. I said, uh, the production employees, they get paid just to show up.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
And this and the sales one, there's like, there's no incentive to drum up business. They just have to perform the bare minimum necessary to keep employed.
Right.
Yeah. I think I think both are, both are, both of you are telling the same thing, but in a different.
Yeah, I don't think there's a really definitive answer like black and white. I think this is like.
Yeah, I I almost feel like this is a gimme. If you're right, if you're at a good joke here, you'll get a point, but, you know.
Neil, what are your, what are your suggestions for?
So my suggestion for a flat wage production employee, I said raise their wage, but monitor accountability of work. With real consequences of termination. Higher salary means they value the job more. Which means they could, you know, potentially, or maybe not stay.
Well, I I went with the constraint that you couldn't raise rates. Because I I gotta be honest, no matter how much you pay them. It whether it's a dollar more an hour after a year, so they don't care. You gotta do more than just that.
So what did you say on yours?
I said, um. As I manage these types of employees, I've found several methods to increase work workers engagement and retention. I find that employees want to be recognized for their work. They want to know that they're doing a good job and contributing to the welfare of the firm. Some employees just want to advance within the organization and look for opportunities. Nothing's worse for employee morale than feeling that there's nowhere to go within the company. The firm should op, the firm should offer opportunities for professional development. Lastly, organizations should make the workplace more enjoyable. I gives examples about, you know, um. Ugly Hawaiian T-shirt day, handout prizes for trivia questions, homemade lumpia competitions. Employees perform better when they are heard and respected.
Uh, Jet must be proud of this.
So I mean, I think they have to, you know, this question has to say where, what type of job this is because. I think you're thinking corporate, but I'm thinking, you know, like a really. You know, minimum wage, basic, you know, somebody was just there because they want, you know what I mean?
Neil, uh, when I was first in college back before you were born, I had a job. At a company called Mervens. Did anyone remember that? Mervens?
Yes, yeah.
And I worked in Hayward in a uh factory where I I would have to put. Tags on little bags of stuff, or I had a job where. Um, I take boxes and put them in other boxes to send to other stores. It was it was that job where that mindless. You didn't even, you didn't even need a high school education to do it. And these people, they. It was it was mind numbing and I luckily I I quit because I couldn't do it anymore. But anyhow, I know what you're talking about. These are the employees.
Yeah, so for me. I think if the if I'm if may, if I made a little bit more and. As you know, as a young person that don't have any experience and I had a hard time getting a job, I would, you know. You could, you can make the case you value this job more, you know, if you make more.
Yeah, but I've been to a lot of places where even if you make a lot of money comparatively, that that it just, if it's a shitty work environment, they don't care.
Yeah, makes sense.
All right, uh, the next one is for sales employees.
Oh, yeah, so I just put you should have a base salary plus commission based on business earn.
Yeah, employees need to collect commission or bonuses for increasing sales revenue. The program must be measurable and equitable for all participants since they are familiar with the community. They should be able to devise a schedule that works best for them.
And then for marketing managers, I just said, we'll continue the same incentive design, but. But commission is tied to their job task directly.
I gave a little extra for leadership and decision process. Because middle managers suck. That's where I've been most of my life. No, no baby talk, Naga.
My daughter is.
Everybody good with this one?
Yep.
All right, let me share my screen on this next one, buddy.
Okay, yep.
Because I got a vested interest interest in onesies. All right, so I copied the same thing I did last time. So we're given this this uh matrix right here.
Yep.
And and it's the same stupid thing we did before. The option is floral and you just basically send it all out.
Yes.
Any questions on that? Because that's pretty self-explanatory, but get there.
So, yeah, once again, I. I did the bare minimum. I can show you mine, but. Maybe I don't want to show mine. But the most important thing is we arrive with the same answer. Nine dollars, six dollars, five dollars.
All right, double pricing is nine dollars, animals and six, and silly sayings at five dollars, right?
Correct.
Then he would come here to, what is the awful bundle price?
Uh, yep.
So basically, if you were to take the swing the the dollar amounts across, that's what you get, then you plus it here in column A.
Can you go back to A? Uh, so silly sayings, you putting at six dollars? And not a five dollars, not six? Why, why five? Because there are three different prices, right? Six, seven and three.
Uh, silly saying.
Okay, up here, okay, up here. That's those are the prices, five, six and twelve.
Oh, yes. So, okay, so. Not the six.
So.
Five.
Okay, so at five dollars, okay, up here at five dollars, grandparents will spend five dollars, but they won't spend six dollars for twelve dollars. That's a dollar more than they want to spend and that's way too much money. So here, when it's five dollars, everyone will buy it. When it's six dollars, the grandparents say, I'm not paying that. I always spend five dollars. And so then you like get twelve dollars.
Yeah, okay. Nine animals, the six. Right?
Animals? So animals is the same thing, right? So grandparents will pay six dollars, parents pay seven, the crazy aunties will pay three. So. Aunties will buy anything, right, other than three dollars. So they they're they don't they don't show up here. The six dollars. Uh, both grandparents and parents will do it, but at seven dollars, only the parents will pay for it. So even though everyone will pay for it, the revenue is only nine dollars, but here, two people will buy it or two groups, then it's twelve dollars, therefore that's more profitable.
I see, okay.
That was good.
All right, so then if we go to the the bundle part here. It's the same thing, you know, who's willing to pay for it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so then you get the the four eight. Now, this other part kind of tripped me up a little bit. So. Customers are willing to pay their awful price point as outlined in the value range table. When the price is said sixteen, all cus- customers are willing to purchase bundle. The revenue probably forty dollars, which is the maximum outcome rate. Bingo. If sold separately using the matrix revenue point, eighteen, twelve, fifteen, so if we go back up here. Eighteen, twelve and fifteen. Right? Numbers, you add that up, you get forty-five, therefore forty-eight is greater than forty-three. The bundle is the best strategy.
Sounds good. Yeah, let me show you mine because I'm also proud of mine.
Did it, brother?
It's not as pretty as yours, but basically this is what I did. I added another column.
Yes, you did.
And I just made hash marks instead of, you know, said, okay, at nine bucks.
It'll work. It'll work.
Aunties buy it as well for animals, grandparents buys it. Parents buy it as well for silly sayings. You price it at five. Tick, tick, tick. All three of them will buy it. And then the bundle here. And pretty much the same thing. And the only thing that I have here that maybe you didn't, but it really doesn't matter is this. Showing that you're get your, you have an increased profit of three dollars. You know, if you do the bundle versus if you don't.
Did your bundle increase profit? That's like, wow.
Yeah.
All right, sweet.
There you go.
Simple and effective. I love it. This group is getting the the best of both worlds.
The the H student and the slacker type of final.
We come, but the thing is, the train arrives at the station at the same time.
Oh, that's true. That's a good point.
All right, so here we give uh this one here, I I got I got this. I think I got it. So the question is, um. Universal and Fox releasing movies, whether in June, July or August. You gotta gotta go through that whole stupid thing here. This first one is easy. You go down and say, okay, what are you gonna choose? Seven? What are you gonna choose here? Six? I'm gonna choose eight. Next, you go across. I went to six. I'm going to six, I'm going to eight. So there you go. Then you have two. Best responses.
So we got, Sid, we got the same national equilibrium, but my 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 hash marks are different than yours. I don't know why. So.
That will make, that'll that'll be important later on. Let let me go through mine, then we can go back and look at yours.
That's good, okay.
I got the same as Sid.
Hmm, the plot thickens.
There are two national equilibriums for best responses, June, August and August, June. In one strategy, Universal released movies in June, the Fox movies in August, right? Both firms maximize their payouts when an option is played. It's basically the same answer for two. Now, suppose. They move sequentially. And Fox moves first, set up. The game tree, what will be the equilibrium path of subgame perfect national equilibrium outcome? Would Fox want this to happen?
I figured it out. What's wrong with mine? Sid, yours is correct.
Thank you, Neil. Takes a big man.
I got a similar set as well. Yeah, Fox go June and Universal goes August.
Right, so.
Release August.
Right, so I I guess here what we do is we 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 solve for Universal first. And they're gonna choose these. Backward reduction trees need to play this Kendo game. When we begin, we're playing June, where Universal has a better payoff August, seven, eight. So this is the path.
Oh, wait. I think you're supposed to convert, you're supposed to flip that. It's supposed to be eight, seven instead of seventy, because if you do Fox first.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, Sid, that should be eight, seven.
Okay.
Your number is reversed, Sid.
All the numbers are reversed?
Yeah.
Yeah, let me show mine.
Because I have.
Path is the same as mine. Your path is the same, but your number is reversed.
Because I have it here where Universal goes first and I have the numbers switched up here. This is what I got off. Two websites, so I I go back and look at that, but um. Let's look here.
So this is correct. Yep, you got this right. Your hash marks here.
So the way I understand it, if Fox. So i- if you're, who goes first? Universal goes first, they get the first column.
All right. So basically, for B, Fox goes first, which means the fir- the second number is your first uh entry.
That's correct.
Okay, good to know. All right. And so then the base, all right, so I I'll flip it around, but yeah, that's.
Yeah, but everything else is the same as mine, so. Looks good.
And that's. There you go. You can share, Neil, show us how it's done.
Let me share.
With a pencil.
With with handwritten stuff. So this is how I did mine.
Yeah, this is what I did too.
Exactly the way Ray did. I keep saying Ray. What's his name? Matt. So basically, that's, yeah, that's it. I don't know.
Beautiful.
Yeah, I didn't do the colors. I just did it in a blue ballpoint pen. That's it.
I will be revising this video and copying this down. All right, is that that's the final exam, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Hey, uh, Neil. I think you put um, Universal would want this to happen for C, but they're asking if Fox wants this to happen.
And uh. Can you share?
Oh, shit. Yeah, that's a good catch.
Fox does not want this to happen. The previous game was Fox moved first, there was a payoff of eight here. Fox payoff is six, which is less than eight.
A good catch. Fox would not want this. Fox would not want this. Good point. Yep.
No, right, if uh, you know, it's are moving fast, and Fox, they don't have choice, right? So, instead of losing everything, they can get at least six.
I, I guess, you know, Fox would not want this to happen, but I don't think they have a choice.
Yeah, yeah, they don't know.
The thing here, yeah.
Yeah.
So, you know, the situation here is, what if Universal moves first?
Yeah.
And then, there, he's just asking, would Fox like that? And the answer is no.
No, answer is no, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Alright, it's dinner time.
Thanks guys.
Alright guys, thank you very much.
Just great, thank you.
Bye.